Notice is hereby given the City Council Committee on Government Services. Co-posted with the committee, the whole will hold a committee meeting on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022 at 6 o'clock PM by remote participation in accordance with the chapter 20 of Acts of 2021 for the purposes of taking on the matters listed below. Every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, I'll post on the Salem, City of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirements to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Click the link below, password 864775. Go to the website, follow the meeting password above if necessary by telephone. Participants can dial toll-free number 888-475-4499 or 877-853-5257 to join the meeting. When prompted, enter webinar ID 84228079332 and follow the instructions to join the meeting. Agenda, meet to discuss amending section 31A of City Council rules and orders related to City Council liaisons to include Salem community organizations. The attendance, we have one, two, three, or all members of the committee. Along with counselors. McCarthy. Marcelo. And Assistant City Solicitor Vicki Caldwell. Okay, so today we are gonna discuss, I guess, three, three items there in front of us. They're all related. The first is just how we as a, as a city council assign liaisons to city boards. And I do have the ordinance in front of me here. I should, I meant to send it out before this meeting here, but we can put it up and just take a look at it real quickly, just to center ourselves. And then to discuss two, two requests. One was to appoint a liaison to the Salem Human Rights Coalition, formerly known as No Place For Hate. And the other is to appoint a liaison to, a petition to appoint a liaison to Salem United. So I guess first I will just. Think I have it here still. Here it is. I'm gonna share, I'm gonna share my screen real quick and just show the, the ordinance. And you don't need to see my email. Okay, so section 31A, President to name counselors to sit as members of boards or agencies. The president shall name counselors to sit as members of any boards or agencies as required by any ordinance and shall further assign counselors as liaisons to other boards or agencies as in the determination of the president as required, provided however that no council member shall be required to sit as a member or liaison on more than one such board or agency. So we have Vicki Caldwell with us here. So again, to, I guess what, looking at sort of the, the crux of the issue here is that, that we have sort of three different types of boards that we're discussing here. One is boards like the planning board that are set out by ordinance and they're, they're to have a liaison from the city council. And that's, you know, that's chosen by the president, but it is, it's something that is required by city ordinance. There are also advisory boards. So advisory boards would be something like the Race Equity Task Force. The formerly No Place For Hate, currently the Salem Human Rights Coalition. Believe the bicycling advisory committee is also considered an advisory board. They, some of them, them have city council liaisons, some don't. But they're not written out, they're not sort of written into our city ordinances. They're something that they serve at the pleasure of the mayor or they serve in some sort of advisory capacity to her. And then the third is, is nonprofits. So an organization like Salem United, I believe, would fall into the, the category of a nonprofit. But that could be many, many different private nonprofits that we have throughout the city and beyond. So I guess Vicki, if you're able to, to sort of discuss maybe a more in-depth understanding of, of the differences and what, what's required and any issues that could come about from appointing a, for the, from the city council specifically appointing a member to serve on, on a private nonprofit.
Hi, thanks, Ty. Yeah, I took a look at section 31A and, you know, I've had some time in the city working with city counselors who are liaisons to various boards and commissions. And, you know, Counselor Hapworth is, is correct that the things that are being discussed in 31A are things that are set forth in the ordinance. There are city boards or agencies that require either by the ordinance itself. And like in the historic commission ordinance, it talks specifically about there will be a liaison. Other ones have just always had a liaison, like planning board, zoning board, board of health. And this is an opportunity for, you know, communication between the council through the liaison to learn the work of those boards and to be able, be able to better inform their work as city counselors. And just to, just to, just to have that coordination, despite not being a voting member of that board. But you're just, you know, involved in, in each meeting and get the, you know, get the straight scoop from that board and can share that with your fellow counselors. The, something like No Place For Hate or the Human Rights Commission is, again, it's not, it was not, it was, those aren't creations of ordinance. They weren't created by an ordinance and they exist as advisory boards in the city that, that helped the mayor with respect to certain issues. And so those are slightly, those are sort of the, I think there have been liaisons to some of those and there have been not liaisons to some of those. And that's something that you certainly, you know, might want to have a discussion about. The, the third category nonprofits in Salem, such as a Salem United or the YMCA or Boys and Girls Club or any of the very many nonprofits that are in the city. That is something that I think that is something that is really outside the box here in terms of your role as counselors. I think it's up to those organizations who they put on their own boards. And we don't usually coordinate as a city with nonprofits in governance matters. And it, you know, it, it could create conflict of interest issues, to be honest with you. And and it may not serve the boards to have someone from the city council on their board. Because if, if a nonprofit came to the city and needed a permit to do something or needed funding for something through a program, that counselor, if they were on that board, would have to recuse themselves. So I really think it is up to, you know, the nonprofits to invite who they want to be on their boards and individual city counselors, if it works for them, they can choose to be on a board. If that's, if, 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 if that's what they want to do. But at the same time, they have to recognize that it could create conflicts for them as well. So those are the sort of things to be mindful of. I, you know, I really caution against having a rule that the council place people on nonprofit boards who request it. Because I just think that that is a sort of a slippery slope that you don't want to go down. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of these issues.
Thank you. And I want to be clear to, before we start, this doesn't. You know, there's, there's a lot of great nonprofits. I think many, many of the people on this, in this committee are serving on multiple different boards or, or working with multiple nonprofits. So I think that, you know, we appreciate the work that they all do for sure. And this doesn't, I think whatever we decide tonight doesn't preclude us from participating and attending meetings and even serving on boards or, or whatever, I think. But there's a distinction to be made between a member who's appointed by, by the city council versus a member who'd made that decision individually. Before I get into questions, if I could just ask, I don't know if you're able to cover the, the anti, we discussed this a little bit this morning, the anti-aid amendment. Is that something that would be appropriate to discuss here or is it something?
It's just one of the, the many concerns in addition to conflict of interest in anti-aid is that, you know, the city is prevented by the state constitution from providing aid to nonprofits. And, and we have to be very careful that what we do falls within the, the four corners of the law on that. And so that's just, it's just another area that there could be a pitfall if the institution of the council were to get involved in other boards. Not as Counselor Happer said, individual counselors being on boards and, you know, doing, you know, and recusing themselves as necessary, if, if, if there's a need to do that. But we, you know, it's, there, it's sort of like there there's parameters around government action and it doesn't involve this kind of interplay with nonprofits as it could, it could look like the city is supporting this nonprofit versus another nonprofit. And we don't want to, we don't want to go there.
I would add, I think that it's also important to remember, and I, if I'm, if I'm wrong here, please correct me, Vicki. But I think that not only would that, that member potentially cause a problem, but I, I could foresee the president who appointed that member and, and the council that voted on that member to be on that board of say CPA funds are being requested or something along those lines, there creates some conflicts of interest there. But Counselor Cohen, you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. Well, I have two things to comment on. First is I do not believe it appropriate for city council to have liaisons on outside organizations for two reasons. One, you know, we all are liaisons to boards and, and we're all members of committees. And it's difficult to be able to attend all the meetings that we would like to. I'm on, for example, the Board of Project Out, which is a Salem nonprofit. We're very particular about not being political. If for some reason Project Out had to come in front of the council for anything, whether it was financial or not, I would have to recuse myself. And then I just want to briefly speak to the Salem Human Rights Coalition. I was the chair and co-chair for nine years. And that coalition, which was the No Place For Hate Committee, has many liaisons from the police department, the schools, the mayor's office, the religious community, the Commission on Disabilities. And I have to take somewhat responsibility. Council President Marcelo and I had a really good conversation. The only liaison that was not designated by the organization itself, for some reason, was the council. We had Counselor Posniewski, Madore, Milo, Epley, and originally O'Keefe. And, and I, based on the conversation with Counselor Marcelo, I believe very strongly that if there is going to be a liaison to the coalition, that it is just like the other designations that the council president does, that she does in this case as well. And so that's how I feel. But as far as outside organizations, I feel very strongly that it would be impossible for us to do it in an equitable way. And I don't think it appropriate per our job responsibilities.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 14 years ago, I walked into my first SRA meeting. I was made the liaison to the SRA. And I had to educate myself what the SRA was. And I showed up the first meeting, I think the meeting lasted maybe five or 10 minutes. I keenly remember the individuals' names that were on the SRA back then. And I introduced myself and they looked at me and said, thanks for coming. If we ever need you, we know how to get ahold of you. You have to remember, if you're a liaison to a board or committee, it doesn't mean you are a member of that board or committee. That means you're a liaison. That means you're the go-between person. You're the, you're the person if they need an issue or something brought to the floor of the city council, you're that person. Whether, it doesn't mean that you may or may not agree with the issue. It's that you're that go, go-to person. Back in the day, I used to sit on every park and rec meeting because there was a lot of stuff going on park and rec wise and, you know, in the Willows and Winter Island. And, and I used to go to the meetings and at one point they didn't have a liaison. And they, after a meeting, they said, hey, Bob, you come to all these meetings. I go, yeah, well, you know, there's a lot going on. He goes, well, we're gonna petition the city council for a liaison. I go, okay. And they go, we want you. How do we do that? That decision is the decision of the city council president. It's right in the ordinance. We all, I, I said, you know, I'd love to serve as, I, I, you can add me on as additional liaison at the time. And the council president at the time, I can't remember who, who it was, appointed me to fill that new liaison position. As a, I just came off a Zoom meeting. By ordinance, the Port Authority establishes that the Ward 1 counselor and the mayor shall be members of the Port Authority. Now, I'm a member of the Port Authority as a, as by ordinance. And so therefore that's, that's different than a liaison. I'm a voting member of the Port Authority because I was, because I am, I'm in that position by ordinance and by the makeup of that board. So just to, I mean, just to give you some retrospect is, you know, the liaisons come directly from, we all put our wish list together. We all say where, you know, where we fit our best fit might be, what our interests are, you know. I know that the, the chair put in for, I assume he put in for, but it would be the natural fit to the liaison to the Veterans Council. Our chair is a veteran. No one else on the city council is a veteran that I'm aware of. So that would be a natural fit. And I, in one of my discussions with the council president, I said, if Ty doesn't want to do it, I understand that. I'm, you know, I, you know, the VFW's in Ward 1. I have a good working relationship with Kim Emeralding over the years. I'd be more than happy to fill that liaison position if you, if you'd like me to. And that's what it is. It's just, you know, and I know Kim, Kim's the kind of guy that likes you to come into his office once a month and say, hey, how's it going? You guys need anything? You know, how's everything okay? He's that kind of person. That's what he, that's what he would expect. But he doesn't, but you're not a member of the Veterans Council. I mean, in this case, Ty technically is because he's a veteran. But, but the, so to put it all in perspective, you know, the liaisons are great. And I think that some people think liaisons are more that like you become a voting member of, like if you're a liaison to the Board of Health, you don't get a vote. You know, when I was the liaison to the Park and Rec Commission, I didn't get a vote. So you don't get votes. You're there to observe, interject if you so wish, because usually it's a, they try, you, it's on your wish list. So it's something you maybe have a passion for or you feel interested in. And it's, you're the person that, if that board or commission ever needs something brought to the floor, you're the person they go to say, hey, we need, we'd like the city council to consider this, or we'd like to bring this information to the city council. And that's what a liaison is. And so I have to agree with Counselor Cohen. I think that, you know, the liaisons are made for city, city boards and commissions. And I have all the respect for the nonprofits all throughout the city. If they, if you so to choose to sit on, I don't want to single any of them out. I could say, you know, we could run the list, Boys and Girls Club, House of Seven Gables. So take your pick. I don't want to, I don't want to offend anybody. I mean, if they so choose to have you as a member on their board, that would be separate from being as your duties as a counselor, being a liaison. And then therefore, as was stated by Vicki, that, you know, when those issues were brought in front of the council, you have to recuse yourself because you'd be a, you'd be a member of that board. So just to put a little perspective on it, I don't mean to get this going down a tangent. But it's, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult because some people believe that, you know, I can't tell you how many times when I was liaison to, I think one year I was liaison to the Board of Health and they called me up and started asking me health questions. I'm like, whoa, I'm, I'm, I'm not a member of the Board of Health. I'm just the liaison, the city council. You need to talk to, I think that was, it was before Dave Greenbaum. So I can't remember the health agent's name at the time, but you need to talk to the health agent. So anyway.
Larry Remden.
Thank you, Larry. I could see his, I could see his face, but his name wasn't escaping me. But, but yeah, I think, I think liaisons are a important position with regards to developing that relationship so that the boards and commissions feel like they have someone they could talk to about what's going on. But you have to remember, you're not a voting member. You're not a, it doesn't mean that you're a member of that board. And I'll just leave it at that.
You, Counselor McCarthy. And agree that the, it's important to just remember that the, the council president is the one that, you know, this position changes out yearly, but that's the person that appoints the, the liaisons. And certainly boards can ask, can ask for a specific member. I know that the, to, to Counselor McCarthy's point, the Veterans Council, they reach out to me and ask if I would serve as the liaison, but ultimately it's the council president's decision. And before we go down, down the path, just to clarify, the, the intent of the meeting is, is to make sure we're just, we're focusing in on the, the process of selecting liaisons and how that, how that happens, just that, that step one process of, of a liaison, not the, the role of the liaison. Because I know we could probably have an entire meeting on, on the role of the liaison and that, and that sort of thing. But Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll say two things. The first will be my experience, my very, my very young, new experience of being a liaison to a few of our city organizations has been pretty divergent. So some organ, you know, one of the boards that I am a liaison to really likes to see me there and wants me to engage in conversation as, as Counselor McCarthy sort of alluded to with his experience where they were asking for his input on a, on a board of health question. And another agency that I'm acting as liaison to kind of leaves me in the audience. And it's like, you know, we'll call you if we need you kind of thing, as he also stated. So so I don't think there's a ton of clarity around exactly what the liaison position is always, always means to an individual organization as they're asking for a liaison or an individual board. But I, I, I understand that that's sort of a little bit of a fuller conversation than we're really addressing tonight. But I do think, to my second item, I do think that if we're considering any sort of updates to this ordinance tonight, one thing we may want to consider is clarifying or, or rather asking those boards to clarify their relationship to the city as they come forward and request a liaison. Because it seems pretty clear that that is something that we want to be really clear about. Are you a nonprofit that is operating in the city versus are you an advisory board which has been asked for by the mayor versus are you a member? Rather, are you a body that is prescribed by ordinance? So I think, I think creating some process where people can understand what information they need to bring forward and, and how that might impact their ability to get a liaison is probably something good that we could produce from this conversation.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. And I will say that, 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 that topic could be an entire, an entire meeting potentially. And it's something that certainly if any member wants to bring it, bring it to the council and we can put into government services and discuss the, the role of the liaison. But again, I do want to keep it as tight as possible to just the, the process of the, the appointment of the liaison, which, which boards and commissions get it, which, which we should have, you know, potentially, which, which categories we would typically not appoint. Any other questions for, for Vicki or any, any comments? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. Based on the, what Vicki said and, and Counselor McCarthy and yourself and, and me, I am going to move that we do not, I know it will be under discussion, but I will move that it is inappropriate for this committee or the city council to consider liaisons for any organization that is outside the city.
So I think that, yeah, I'm trying to think of the way that this, that this should leave, leave committee. I think if we're considering the first, the first item, so the first item is the amending the ordinance for the appointment of, of city council liaisons. I think that, and it's up to the, to someone to make a motion on that. I think that's something that, well, actually, maybe we'll, we'll first ask Vicki. Vicki, I think, you know, I know it's another topic you and I covered this morning. Do you think that, I think it's 31A? Yes, is 31A clear enough to you and sufficient enough that you think that it could, it could remain as is? Or do you think it's something that we should consider adding additional language to?
I think, I think it's fine as is. It talks about members of boards or agency required by ordinance and further assign. The, you know, I think it might be tempting to lay out all the boards and commissions, but I think that's something that, you know, we find in ordinance drafting that you always end up in trouble when you detail everything. And then later on, those organizations change names or there are additional things. So I think that, I think the way, the way it is worded now does, does work and has the flexibility that's required. I think internally the council, you know, may want to, you know, you know, keep track of, of, you know, of, I mean, obviously you do when, when the council president makes those appointments. At the beginning, I, there's a list that goes out to the counselors, I assume, of what the potential board liaison jobs are. And you can rank them, I guess, is probably how it goes. So I mean, I think the only issue would be for the council is there, are there things that are not on that list that goes around that should be, you know? And that I don't know because I, I'm not sure how, what, what the composition of that is. But I mean, but generally speaking, the, the, the ordinance speaks to boards and commissions that are, you know, required by ordinance here. And, and anything after that is sort of outside of that. And so.
I think, I think I would.
You could entertain some clarification, but I don't, I don't think you have to.
I think I would, I would tend to agree that I think that the, clearly it should say that we're, that we appoint as required by ordinance, but there is also some flexibility in there. And I think that allowing for that, because, you know, right now it's typically, that's, that's advisory boards, people in official capacities, who knows what, what things could look like in the future. And I think it doesn't allow enough flexibility that we know that we shouldn't, that it sounds like probably the private nonprofits should not be appointed. But yes, I think if somebody would like to, to, to make them, just that first item, and I'll, I'll, I'll get to your, your question, Counselor Veron, in just one second. But I think that we should probably be looking at, if you're willing, something along the lines of, of discharging this, this first particular item around how we appoint liaisons from committee. But Counselor Veron, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion. And in accordance to 31A, with boards and agencies assigned, that the ordinance worded as of now stays as is, as how we appoint our liaisons.
Do you want to discharge this particular item from? I think the action would be to either, or to amend the, the ordinance and anybody in the, anybody on the council in the audience, if you want to correct me there, please feel free. But I think it would be to either discharge or to, or to make a change.
I would like to discharge. Thank you.
Does Counselor Veron have a second? Counselor Cohen, seconds? Counselor Watsonfeld. I'm sorry, under, under, I'm sorry, under discussion first, if there's any further discussion here.
I, I, for my part, I, I agree. I think that having been really close both as an executive nonprofits and a leader of nonprofit boards, I think that this is absolutely correct. There's, there's no way to do this that keeps us untangled and the nonprofits free to, you know, to, to move freely. I think this is the right move. Since I had the floor, I thought I'd add.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to pose a point of consideration for the rest of the body, which is, is it, do, do we want to? Do we want to either discharge this or do we want to take the action of specifically eliminating outside agencies and nonprofits from consideration as liaisons? Even understanding that there may be situations where there may be an organization whose work is really vital to the work going on in the city. I mean, there, there may be occasions where there is an organization which is undertaking a process which the council may want to have liaison on because it really does cut to one of the core things that we really want to work on as a city. I mean, we have any number of matters from housing to the upcoming port redevelopment that we may receive a request and say, yeah, we think it's a good idea to have a liaison for the city serving in this capacity, even though they are not specifically affiliated with the city. So I would just, I would just put that out there for everybody's consideration before we quickly discharge that option.
Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. I think that Counselor McLean makes an important point. But I would come back to the distinction again between a representative of the body.
A, um, representative of the body, which is what the liaison is sort of legally. Versus our own individual engagement, um, I know that historically, you know, and in, and in the case of. Salem United, it may be that maybe there's a ward counselor engagement, right, from, from a board. Perspective in that way, or there's an opportunity for, for strategic conversations without. Um, exposing the, 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 the body to a liability or to limiting our ability to vote. And so that distinction for me is where it's like really at. Um, so I hear your point and it's an important point, and I think it actually speaks to. What I sort of heard you saying before, which was if we had some kind of formal process in place, right, through which people could navigate. This process, you know, I think that sometimes people think they need a liaison, but maybe that, that, they, they don't know that they don't, maybe that they don't know that. That we're totally accessible, right, and there's other ways to kind of build that relationship, so. So, um, I'd be fascinated and interested in, in for future meetings to have that conversation separately. Um, but in this case, I, I would hesitate to act to specifically, fully add exclusionary language to the ordinance. Um. Only because I, I don't know that we have to, except that it would then be on record for future, for future councils, um. Those are just my initial, my initial reaction thoughts for that.
So Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Hathworth, um, I agree with counsel Watson, uh, felt on this, I, I can't think of any reason that. A organization would require a liaison, we've had plenty of instances where, um, a nonprofit. Um, has had some interest with the city. And has reached out to counselors either to advocate for them or to help, you know, through the process. I think it's a bad precedent, I think there's some legal issues as, as both Vicky and counselor. Uh, Watson felt said, and so I, I really feel like, um. It doesn't make sense for us to add any language into this ordinance that would enable. Uh, an outside organization to have a liaison, there's plenty of ways for. Organizations, uh, in and outside the city to gain access, uh, through the city, whether it's to the council or to city employee. You know, other city employees, so I, I think we should vote on this and, um. And, and I think this is not out of any disrespect to any organization, uh, we have. Really probably a disproportionate, uh, ratio of nonprofits in Salem, and I'm very proud of that, so. I feel like, um, you know, personally, um. I have a great relationship as, uh, you know, uh, Salem Human Rights Coalition did with Salem United, I'm on the board of a couple of nonprofits. And I'm really proud of the, the work that they do, and I think we all are, I don't think we're making a statement about. Uh, the, you know, the validity of any nonprofit in Salem.
Agreed, and I got, like I said earlier, I think that this, probably the, uh, the people on this meeting here belong to more, um. More nonprofits and serve a more than, 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 I know, a lo- a lot of us here, it's, it's, uh, and I think that, you know. I don't know if I, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I think that this is not a statement against any non, any specific nonprofit, it's just, you know, this is. Not a best practice to potentially do things this way, all right, so the motion on the floor is to discharge, uh, the first matter from committee, which is, uh. To look at amending our, um, thirty-one A of the ordinances around appointments of liaisons. Um, there's no further discussion, uh, Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Sir McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Verella.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, on the matter of, uh, discharging this from committee, uh, we had five members voting and five in the affirmative. Um, the matter carries, so the other two that we have right now in front of us are, uh, appointment of, um. Appointment of the liaison to the Salem, to Salem United and the appointment of a liaison. To the Salem Human Rights Coalition, I did see Doreen Wade in the audience here. Um, Doreen, you don't, you're, you're not required to, but if you'd like to speak, I'm happy to, uh. To allow you to talk here, if you're still there. If you want to raise, if you want to raise your hand, um. And you should be good to speak if you unmute yourself.
Am I on?
Yes, you are.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? Um. Basically, I am just here because, um, some time ago. It was insisted.
I'm, I'm sorry, real quick, I'm sorry, Dorian, my fault, uh, can you just state your name and, and address for the, for the record?
Sure, Doreen Wade, sixty-two Frederick Street, Drakehead, Mass, um. It was, it was, um, voted on, approved. By the council president and the mayor. That, um, and the city solicitor, that Salem United had a liaison. On the board because of a lot of confusion that was, um, being done. So that is why I am here today. I, I just, you know, I know what you voted on, I just wanted it on the record that, um. This, all this process was done, it was approved and a liaison was supposed to be assigned. To Salem United's board. So I just wanted to get that clear. And.
If, if you're able to clarify and I'll, I'll, um, but I, I, if you're able to clarify, it was voted on by, by which body?
Um. Uh, I can't remember, can I, I can send you the email from, um, the city council. Who sent it to me at that time, because I still, I still have it, I just don't have it in front of me, I apologize. I just found out like. Uh, five minutes before six o'clock that you all were gonna do this. And Irene Simmons sent me an email, she apologized and she said, Doreen, they're doing it tonight. I did not know, so I am not prepared, so I deeply apologize. I just, I just came on to see if I could catch up or figure out what's going on.
And I, I would be, and I'm sure other members would be as well, but I think that the. The goal is to get, to get you whatever support you're looking for, it, you know. Sounds like it would not be able to come through an officially appointed liaison, but I think that I, I would certainly be willing to meet with you and, and discuss. What it is you're looking for out of, out of the council and what kind of support we could provide. Um, so if, if offline, if you and I want to set up some time to speak, I'm happy to do that.
It sounds wonderful, I would appreciate that, but like I said, I just wanted everybody to know. That this was not just me coming, um, and making this request. This request was done before, I apologize because there's been a lot of confusion. I did not follow up properly, um, I will say that. But I was always under the assumption that somebody would be put on.
Thank you, Dorian.
Okay, um, you have my email, you can email me and set something up.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good and safe night.
Too. So on the, uh, what's in front of us right now, the, the specifically is the, the appointment of a liaison to Salem United. Um, if someone would like to make a motion, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Hathworth, I move that we discharge this, uh. From the committee without recommendation.
Second.
Just to, to, to clarify, wi- with, uh, would, would you like to make it with a recommendation not to appoint a liaison?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen moves that we discharge this from committee with a recommendation not to appoint a liaison from the city council, I believe that was seconded by Counsel Verella. Under discussion? Any discussion? Okay, uh, Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, Chair Hathworth, I would just echo your sentiments to Ms. Wade, which was that, um, you know, I'm, I'm also accessible. Uh, to have a conversation, I'd be willing to talk about, um, the work she's done in the downtown area already and what her plans are. Um, just putting my, my hat in the ring as well to support that work, um, and just, you know, like as Counselor Cohen had said before, just to reiterate, reiterate. This is, this is not specific to any, any one, um, nonprofit, you know, we value the work of our nonprofits in Salem, thanks.
Thank you. And we'll take a roll, Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
I think I'm gonna vote present.
Counselor, um, Counsel Verella.
Yes.
So on the, uh, matter of discharging this with a, uh, recommendation not to appoint, uh. We have, uh, five members voting for the affirmative, one voting present, uh, the matter carries. Uh, Counselor McLean, if you want to, just, just to circle back, if you wanted to. If there's some further discussion that was to be had there that, that we didn't get in before, I just, just curious about the present vote, if you don't mind.
Sure, um, I didn't want to prolong, but I think. I think not having clarity on. What decision was made previously by perhaps a previous iteration of the council. I just am not comfortable voting to recommend that we don't appoint women when a previous body may have. Decided to appoint and then just not executed what they agreed to do. And, and it may be the case that if, if in fact the previous council did. Um, make a determination to provide a liaison to Salem United, then. Then the, the question may come back before us as to whether to amend the ordinance to clarify. Who is eligible, you know, we may end up right back in the same spot of. Do we appoint liaisons to independent organizations or not, so that, that's, that's the reason for the, for the present vote.
Thank you. Okay, and then the final matter, uh, in front of us is appointment of a, a liaison to the Salem Human Rights Coalition, which is a advisory board to the mayor. Um, any, any discussion or comments around, around this specific issue? Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, uh, Chair Hathworth, just a point of clarification on the history here, so there has been historically city, um, a, a city. Council liaison and we just sort of fell off, something fell out of the habit. This is how it happened, is that why we're back here tonight?
So there, there has historically been a, a, a city council member that has been appointed here, um, I think Jeff, I think Counselor Cohen just, just mentioned that it goes back to. Believe, did you say?
O'Keefe, yeah, Counselor O'Keefe.
Yep, um. So this has historically happened, I think that there was, uh, this is just falling into the, uh. Um, this entire question we have about how members are appointed and what. What, what boards get a liaison, which ones don't, and how does this happen? Um, I think it's important to, to point out, uh, with this one specifically, that, that the president does appoint the member that is to serve as the. Um, as the liaison to, to a board, they can ask for a member for sure, for sure, but we want to be clear that it's the president that appoints. Any further, does it, did that, that clarify?
Yeah, I think it did, I think it did, I think the last comment I would make is just, just to reiterate that. As far as I understand from the initial part of tonight's conversation, this is an advisory board to the mayor. It falls into that category, right, of, of a group that we would, that we are all comfortable with, um, the president appointing. A liaison to, um, and as long as we're all on board with that, then yeah, then I, then I have all the clarity I need, thanks.
Counselor Cohen.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Hathworth, uh, just a further clarification, it's a mayor's advisory board and, uh. And I was chair, co-chair whenever we had a liaison, when it was no place to hate. Um, and we made a mistake of not going to the council. To have the council president. President designate the person as Counsel President Marcello and I talked about, it may have. Been the person that ended up being the liaison, um. But we made a mistake because every other organization that I mentioned that has a liaison to. Uh, what's now the Salem Human Rights Coalition designated their liaison, so it, it's. I do think that it would be appropriate, um, to have one, I think the mission of the coalition. Is to, you know, combat prejudice and discrimination throughout the city. And so it's really great to have representatives of a lot of different city and non-city organizations. Um, but there was a mistake made, I, I take some responsibility in that. And I do think, uh, there should be a liaison if, if someone wants to serve, and I think it should be, um. Designated by the, the council president.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, that's, it sounds like the, um, we're ready to make a motion, someone would be, be ready to make a motion on this one.
I, I'm happy to make a motion as long as I get a little help with crafting it, it sounds to me like we are making a motion. Uh, that, uh, we support. Counsel President Marcello appointing a council liaison to this, uh, to the Human Rights Coalition. Or the, it's a one year, like they all are, right, someone.
I believe so.
Every year, yeah, I'm okay for, for the year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Um, yeah, that's, uh, the, 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 the city council appointed liaison to the Salem Human Rights Coalition.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So Counsel Watson felt moves that we appoint, that, that, that we, we recommend that the city council appoint a liaison to the Salem Human Rights Coalition.
Second.
Second by Counsel. Any further discussion? And we'll take a roll call vote, uh, Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Yeah, Counsel Verella.
Yes.
And I am a yes, so we have five members voting, five in the affirmative, the matter carries. All right, thank you, everybody, thank, thank you, Vicky, we appreciate you jumping on this call tonight and, and appreciate the conversation this morning, I think it provided a lot of clarity for all of us. Um. Any further questions, comments, business, anything else before we take a final motion? All right, well, thank, thank you all for coming tonight, we, we appreciate the discussion these last two days, we typically probably won't have government services meetings back to back like this, but I think we did. We did move through a lot of items and, and really appreciate everyone's hard work and thoughtful conversation. And I will take a final motion if someone wants to make it, Counsel Verella.
Motion to adjourn.
Counsel Verella motions to adjourn, second by Counselor Watson felt. Um, Counsel Verella.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you, everybody. Enjoy your Friday.